Good evening and welcome to the Monday November 24th City Council meeting for the city of Lamar, Colorado. I'm Mayor Chris Kristen. You know, tonight we have an executive session to do a 30-day follow-up with our new city administrator, and I just want to say we've loved having Mitch Hammons here today, as well as for the last month. He's done a wonderful job. If the community hasn't had an opportunity to meet him yet, I would encourage you to take the time to get to know him. He's been a wonderful asset for our community. Everybody that I've talked to has just been very impressed and very happy with him. So I want to thank him for the 30 days. Everything seems to be going well. Took a lot off my plate, for sure, so that is even more grateful. But more importantly, we just want to welcome him again, and you know, now that we've reached that 30-day period, we're going to meet with him at an executive session, just kind of get an update with Mitch to see how things are going within the city, and see where we need to do some improvements at. But I did want to take a moment to thank him for being here in Lamar and being part of the team. He has been just invaluable so far, and hopefully you're feeling great about it as well.
I can't believe it's been 30 days already. I can remember when 30 days felt like a long time, and now it just feels like overnight. So that's got to be a good thing.
Well, time flies when you're having fun, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
That's what they say. Well, with that said, we're going to start off our meeting with the invocation. We have Pastor Slime here tonight. Would you lead us in the invitation?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, today we're so thankful for the beautiful day that you've given us. We thank you for the moisture you've provided recently, and we all know how important that is to our land. We thank you for the city council, Lord, and what they do, and we just pray that you would bless each one of those. Sometimes we know it's a volunteer position, and the people get aggravated at them or other things, but they're only trying to do what they feel is best for our community, and we thank you for that. We also ask, Lord, for all the employees of the city, Lord, that you would bless them as well, and we thank this time of Thanksgiving. We just pray that we would all be thankful for the things that we have and that we're able to enjoy, especially because of our council and others that do the work to make our city better. In Jesus' name, amen.
Councilman Gonzalez, would you lead us in the pledge?
I'd like to lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the time is now 7:03 PM. I'll call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Joe Gonzalez.
Here.
Mark Headley.
Here.
Jerry Jenkins.
Here.
Kirk Krespin.
Here.
David Zavala.
Here.
Brad Johnson.
Here.
Grant Bates.
Here.
Kristen Schwartz.
Here.
Mitch Hammons.
Here.
Lance Clark.
Here.
Okay. Let's see. We have the consent. We've already had a chance to review the agenda. However, I didn't see any changes to the agenda. Did anyone else see any changes we needed to make to the agenda?
I didn't see any changes that need to be made, but there was one thing on the bills that we need to separate.
Yes.
Yep, we'll go on that with the consent agenda.
Okay.
But for the agenda, we'll move forward. Now we'll look at the consent agenda, and there was one item on the agenda.
Yes.
Consent agenda? Is that right?
Yes. Check number 103660, the amount of $100 to Riverside Communications for advertising.
Okay, so we'll just need to separate that out from the consent agenda and vote on that separate. With the remaining items of the consent agenda, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda without check number 103660 for Riverside Communications. All those in favor signify with an eye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Jury.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay. Now, we would just have the other item for check 103660 for $100 to Riverside Communications.
So moved.
I'll second that.
And I will abstain. All those in favor signify with an eye.
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 Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of with Mayor Krespin abstaining.
Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda. We have our public comment portion of the meeting. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject that does not appear on the agenda. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each, and that is at the discretion of the council. Does anyone have anything that they would like to speak to the council about? Seeing none, we will move on to reports and correspondence. We'll start off with the city treasurer's report.
Thank you. I really don't have a lot tonight. Right now, we're working on getting the archery range grant closed out with CPW, and working on also cleaning or closing out the one for the fishing dock. And we're waiting on seeing if we can get the fish cleaning station in to close that one out by the end of the year. If not, we may have to ask for an extension on that one. But those are really the only two we're actively working on closing out right now. So and just continuing to work on other ones. TAP grant, we had a meeting with CDOT just to get our rep caught up on where Patton and his crew were, had met with JVA and did a walkthrough, and where we were at on all of that. So we're continuing to work on that one as well. We have a bid out for the Willow Valley Waterline project right now, so we're waiting for that deadline to hit, so we can get a contractor started on that project as well. So, and that was ARP funds that are paying for that one. So, but that's really all we have. The highlights, anyway, of what we got going on right now, unless somebody had questions for me.
Any questions for the treasurer?
No.
I don't have any.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, we'll go into the city clerk's report.
And I do not have a report this evening unless anybody has questions for me.
Any questions for the city clerk?
No.
No.
Don't have any.
Okay. City administrators' report.
Yes, city offices will be closed Thursday and Friday this week in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. The Chamber of Commerce has their cocoa crawl on Saturday, the 29th, from 10 to 2. Remember to shop local, check out merchant specials, and fill up with cocoa at the Shore Arts Center Park. The Parade of Lights is Saturday as well, starts at 6:30 PM. Common Grounds is Wednesday of next week, December 3, at 7:00 AM in the Cultural Events Center. The City of Lamar Christmas Party is Saturday, December 6, at the Elks Club, so look forward to seeing everybody there. And we have some department updates. A number of our department directors are here tonight, so I'm not going to talk about them. I want to give them an opportunity to give their presentations and promote what they wanted to talk about. The interesting things, though, that we want to talk about is that the Community Development Department, we're looking at some training opportunities, some virtual training opportunities for our building department. They can also bleed over into some inspection and field activities and stuff like that. So looking forward to really promoting that and making a little, upping our skills a little bit, not, you know, we can always get better. December 4, code enforcement, and I have a meeting with the county regarding rabies risk management and testing. And so that's going to be an interesting meeting. I don't know if we've ever done that before. I know I haven't, so it'll be definitely something to explore and see what they're doing. And then the really cool thing that happened late last week is, as council appointees, Linda Kristen and I agree that we're going to meet on a regular basis, just to talk internally, the three of us, keep communication open, stuff that we, as come, stuff that comes up. That way, we're not, mostly, I am not going down and bugging Linda and Kristen all the time. I can, you know, the little questions I have, I can put it on the agenda for those. And so I think both Linda and Kristen have said that would be a good thing. I think it's, I think they told me to discuss items, but I think it's more to keep me out of their office every day. So I'm looking forward to having that that regular communication with them, so that we can move forward. And that's all I've got for right now.
Okay. Any questions for the city administrator?
I don't have any.
Anybody else?
You mentioned the, something about the rabies. Has that been an issue around the Lamar area that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of, but I'm, because the county called that meeting, it must be somewhere or something, so.
You know, we've, we've discussed about, you know, in Willow Valley specifically, we have a skunk problem every year. I'd be curious to know if some of those skunks have been found to have rabies.
Okay, and I'd definitely give an update on that at our next meeting on the 8th.
Thank you.
What that was about.
Great. Any other questions for our city administrator? Seeing none, we will move on to the reports of correspondence from the council. Joe, do you have anything today?
The golf board did meet, however, I did not get to make it to their meeting. I did get to go to the pep meeting that they had a guest speaker show up from the Southeast Colorado Regional Housing Authority. She gave them an update on what she's working on and what hope to accomplish with housing and development in that area, and some of the projects that they are hoping that will take place, and where they plan to build such housing, Fort La Housing. And she kind of gave a price range about the housings that they're hoping to build, roughly from 200 to 275,000 per home. And these homes won't be built until the actual person that buys the house has already bought the house, and then they'll build it. So she presented some plans and looked really great, and I'm hoping the program takes off without a hitch. She'd mentioned that not only Lamar, but Holly, Crowley County, Lahana, areas of that nature in the Southeast Arkansas Valley area will be receiving all these homes here. It'll be something, what I found similar to be like what we had that first phase up there on Sevigny Avenue there, so that's what I compared to. And, but that's really about it. I mean, they had business as usual, and nothing else really jumped out at me during the meeting.
Okay. Great. Mark, did you have any? I know you don't have your liaison yet, so. Yep. Jerry?
Yes.
Okay.
Mitch?
So last Thursday, we met the Public Safety Board, Matt, and it was really an interesting meeting. We had a CDOT traffic engineer down, talked about some traffic issues that they had found and that kind of stuff. The really cool part was he gave us some resources. The Federal Highway Safety Administration has some quick, quick build projects, so it's like pre-designed traffic calming and other traffic safety projects that basically are on the website that you can just pull off and build as long as you, as long as we have the resources. So I haven't had a chance to look at that website yet, but it's definitely something that we can look at and see if there's anything that we need to consider or that we can consider. The other interesting things is he, he told us a lot of stuff that is really low cost. There's some painting configurations you can do at intersections that cause people to reduce their speed or pay more attention. So it was really interesting getting that education. Also, he told us there's some ongoing grant opportunities that, that there's no end to, you know, no application periods or anything like that. It's just we put in an application when we decide which one we want to try for and go from there. So we'll be looking at that as well and passing the information on to Kristen and Tess as well, so we can coordinate on what we, what we need to do for that. It was a really, really great, great meeting we had.
It really was. They even had to come and kick us out, because we've been over on our time, but it was a good turnout with good information.
Okay, great. Anything else? David?
No, I don't have anything. In the meantime, nothing with planning and zoning yet or recreation department. Haven't had no updates or dates on when we're going to have those meetings.
Okay. Brad, I know you don't have one yet as far as the liaison position. We'll get there. Brad?
Excuse me. Both of my committees met last Wednesday at the exact same time, and I could not be at either of those meetings. I don't have anything.
Okay. And I don't have anything either, so we should be able to move forward. Moving on to new business, we have a public hearing scheduled for a new hotel, restaurant, liquor license for Lizzie Perez Valet. Is it Valet?
Valet.
Valet, sorry. Valet, doing business as Los Juniors. So we'll start off by opening the public hearing. I will, do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, and now we have a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor signify with an eye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Jerry and David?
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay. Now we are in the public hearing. We'll start off with the staff presentation. City clerk, do you want to give us an update on what's been done?
So they turned in their application. They have their fingerprints done. We posted on site and in the newspaper on November 14. And other than that, I'm going to turn it over to Kevin.
Okay.
Don't have lots to add either, and then it appears as if the paperwork is all in order, looking up the contacts and anything else of concern. We have no extra comments, questions, or concerns in regards to the application as outlined before you.
Okay. And has our city attorney reviewed everything?
I didn't see any concerns with the application.
Okay. So no concerns from the staff, the chief, or the city attorney?
No, sir.
All right. This is the time when we allow the applicant, if you'd like to, to come up and speak about your application. If you wanted to add anything or talk about anything, would you like to do that tonight? Well, you would need to come up, sorry. Mainly, we ask, we generally get like, what is the purpose of the application? What are your intents? And, you know, what are your plans for your business and how you're going to use this application?
So mainly, I mean, it would be for the benefit of the business. We've had people come, I'm sorry, we had people come in and, I mean, they always ask for our gritas or a beer, and unfortunately, we have lost, I would say, a significant amount of tables just because we don't have our liquor license. I think it would help us grow as well and like make some new renovations that we are wanting to make as, I mean, I don't know if you have been into the restaurant, but it is a little bit just not updated. So I would feel like that would be beneficial as well to us. I don't know if you have any specific questions for me?
Now, one of the things that we've always asked was about tips training for the staff. Have you been through all of that?
So I actually did speak to Missy this morning about that. She did mention that that would be kind of the requirement, and we would be able to complete that, given, I mean, we don't have, like, a lot of stuff to go through, so it wouldn't be as hard to complete. So that would be something that would be doable.
So how many servers would you actually have?
Right now.
That are number 21 that would need to be certified?
Right now, it would be probably myself, my parents, and then one of our servers right now.
So four?
Yeah, probably about four people.
Okay.
Yes.
And none of you have been tip certified yet?
No, not, not yet, sir.
Yeah, you can do that online, but that's usually one of the requirements to get the license, so that's why I was asking the question about it.
Oh, okay. I was not aware of that until I spoke to Missy today, so she said that usually they would give us some time.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't know if that, how it works or not.
Okay. Okay. Does the council have any questions for the applicant before they move on?
You, I'm not familiar. I apologize. Where, where are you located at?
So we are located on 1010 East Olive. It was the old La Lupitas.
Okay, and that's kind of by the.
Uh, Cattedores.
Car wash, yeah, there, in the car wash.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Any other questions?
I don't have any.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, at this time, I will open the floor to anyone that is for or against this application. Is there anyone here to start off with that is for this application, other than the applicant? Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak against this application? Okay. Seeing none, I will close the floor and give the opportunity for any questions or clarifications from the council. Did we have any questions on this? Any discussion that we want to have, that you wanted to ask the applicants or the staff?
I do have a question as far as what would the license allow them to serve? Is any type of alcohol?
Alcohol and beer, wine.
Anything?
Okay.
Beer and spirits.
Okay. Okay. If there are no more other questions, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a seconds. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Eye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
All right. Now we just need to do the city council action. What would the council like to do on this application?
I'd make a motion to approve the liquor license.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. As far as discussion, the only thing that I would like to, to consider is that we make the application approval with the basis that the four individuals would be tip certified before they sell. Is that possible?
It is, because as soon as it gets done, I have to send it to the state. Once the state issues it, it's a legal, or it's a legal license.
How long does it take for the state to complete it?
It could take four to six weeks, or it could take two weeks. Depends on their schedule. I can keep you updated. I feel that, that they will get right on this and get their tip certification. I can keep you updated.
Within the two weeks?
When you, after you complete that, can you print out the certificate and bring it to our office, please?
Okay.
Okay. All right. Could you put that, well, we, should we put it in the vote as far as pending that, or should we just make that as a requested requirement?
Well, we don't do it to others, and they always bring in their stuff, so why can't we just approve the license?
Well, that's what I'm asking. I want to make sure we do it right.
I can't do it as a pending item.
Right.
Okay. And we don't have anything in our municipal code, or there's no state statute requiring it for a license.
Yeah, we can't make it conditional on it.
Yeah. Okay, so I would highly recommend you do. If you go on the website, it tells you who they suggest should be tip certified. One staff member always has to be tip certified on, on duty. It tells you who can't serve alcohol, who can't mix alcohol, there's a difference. So I'd like to keep my motion the same. Okay.
I'll second it.
All right.
It's already been seconded.
It's already been seconded. We have a motion and a second. There is no change to it. I will close the discussion and call the question. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Eye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay, you have your license then. All right, we will move on to the next item on the agenda. We were supposed to have a Lamar High School Student Council presentation, but I don't see them here tonight.
Don't either.
So I guess we won't do the, we will skip over the Lamar High School Student Council presentation for tonight. You're welcome to stay or welcome to go whenever you're ready. It's up to you, but your part is done, so.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Good luck. All right, so we will skip over Lamar High School Student Council presentation since they're not here, and we'll move on to the public safety building update. It's been a while since we've had an update on what's happening with the public safety building. I know I have been asked multiple times as far as what is happening with it, so this will give the council a chance to get an update, as well as get a chance for the community to hear about it, too.
Awesome. Well, good evening, council. Mayor, myself and Chief Ritter have been meeting weekly roughly with our architect and construction firm that we've been utilizing to help design the public safety building, where we're ensuring that this is going to be a 30 to 50-year building process, uh, building, not building process, oh my gosh, but building that we can sit there and utilize for future growth of both of our departments and the city of Lamar. As you guys know, it's the old Car Palace that was selected by council. I got tons of drawings if you guys want to look. I'm just going to leave them up here for you guys to cruise at your own. But, come on.
Yeah.
Because that's my position. Okay, man. Not so much of a full redesign outside of the building, but what we're doing is we're limiting a lot of the glass in the front, mainly for safety purposes, initially to be a nice 40-day for entry to, and actually, the offices and a lot of the admins is going to be in the front center portion of the building. A lot of Kevin's patrol officers are going to be on the north side in the, in the back portion, and then the fire department, of course, are big high bays, store trucks, stuff that's going to be on the south side of the building, with a lot of the more amenities in the back, like a day room for the guys to cook their meals, five bedrooms for the paint staff to sleep in, shared workout space, as well as a large evidence room for Kevin and his guys to sit there and actually have spaces to store evidence and maintain some chain of custody. We, like I said, we've been meeting weekly through Zoom, and just, it's so in-depth as far as what we're getting accomplished. Right now, these are 80% drawings. They're hoping to have 100% drawings by roughly the second week of December, maybe a little bit later, depending on the quality of schedules that everybody. We're still moving forward in some of the, they call it NEP, so mechanical plumbing, electrical. We're making sure we're getting outlets in the right spots. I can't remember how many times we've gone over outlets and rooms.
Outlets and data ports.
Data ports.
That was the pipeline details.
So when we're moving forward with all this, I'll, you're doing great.
Do you have a layout of the interior?
We do have a layout of the interior. We've got one kind of overall, and we have a couple of Zoom copies, so we can sit there and look at those. So kind for the overall. So with our overall here, again, a lot of the admin offices are up here in the front, Kevin's large evidence room, a lot of patrol officers, patrol sergeants, combined workout area, a lot of the fire department, the bedrooms are along the back, the day room where we can get our coffee, meals, a large training area for us as well. So that's kind of how that's laid out. And we have a side by, side splits. If you want to see even more, get a lot of that up. So the fire department side, we have a lot of our offices all up in here, as far as the chief, the deputy chief, fire prevention officer, and EMS officer, just because of the nature of our business, we're all growing all the time. So we're going to have to slowly start integrating some new employees, not now, but later in the future, to sit there and deal with some of this. Our billing clerk, as well as a centralized mail room. So that way, you know, of course, all mails still come here, but we can sit there and sort it back to our individual offices, back to this place. Large training area. One unique thing for us is it's going to be a separate SCBA compressor room, so our large compressor that compresses our breathing air. It's got its own separate room away from all the diesel exhaust and soot, so we can get cleaner air and have a nice clean space for that to happen. Large bunker locker room for us, as well as a decontamination room. Right now, if some of our guys have to get dirty from EMS calls or anything like that, we're dragging either soiled clothing through our day room, or, you know, just a lot of nasty stuff that you get in your living space. And nobody's wearing that living space, so you can be able to get a clean change of clothes, shower, and then move on to the bunk rooms to go ahead and get their, their uniforms placed back on. And again, same thing with Kevin on his side. Tell you what.
Okay, Brian, we'll do this. Again, talking about the future of the facility, I think both Jeremy and I have only thought about, this is maybe more practical 10, 15, or 20 years from now. I kind of kept that in mind the whole time about having areas to expand and having things that we don't currently have, but we're moving towards having. We've got a separate vehicle processing area, and kind of like a selling port area where you have somebody that's, you've arrested, you don't have to sit outside in a vehicle or sit somewhere else and do the necessary paperwork. You can bring them in, you can have them in the interrogation or interview rooms and the holding cell. Again, we currently haven't had one of those for 20-some years. Also going to enhance the safety of the officers, as well as the building if we have to bring somebody into the building. We've built an administrative offices and cook's offices that we share up the front here with the fireside. And then again, we have the separate workout areas, some shower room, locker room facilities. The evidence expanding area has been built up to the degree that it's going to meet future CBI requirements as far as contamination of separating drugs, narcotics, weapons, found property, all that. There are certain state requirements, we've had that all built in, as well as when you take the evidence and you drop it, the secure areas, you have to have three layers of security that we've put into there. I also have an expanded armory to keep everything safe and secure there. And this area is all patrol offices next to patrol sergeants. We can expand this up as needed. We currently have a built-in four extra spaces with the ability to expand up a little bit more, just integrate that onto the back of these interview and interrogations rooms. And again, this is all, most of this is all patrol area, design patrol area, of the shed offices, but it is going to be, able to be expanded 15, 20, you know, 30 years. I think we got in this building in '74. Hopefully I'm not around in 50 years to see this come to fruition, but there's a lot of areas spaced that have been built in there. Another Jeremy is taking a lot of time to put some things for a lot of growth in the future if that comes to pass, while also keeping in mind a very common sense, practical application for everything that. for everything that's been built in here. I understand this isn't a facility that you're going to find in Greenwood Village or Cherry Hills. It's a real common sense, practical approach. We're getting everything that we're going to need for the future, and hopefully it'll be a good facility for the future. We wouldn't have the need to expand or do anything else for quite some.
Okay.
So some of the next steps, again, we're gonna be getting hopefully the hundred percent set plans here in the next few weeks that would allow them to start getting pricing on all the construction costs that would follow with a build such as this. We're also working with CDOT at this time, Michelle Regalotto. On our CDOT access permit, we're changing out some of the driveways in the front. Currently, there's three access points off of Main Street as well as one that's off of Lampton right now. So we're needing to do some rearranging to fit the needs of of this facility here.
Do you want to discuss the land behind it for their training?
Yeah, yeah. So out back behind the property is quite an extensive area for both fire and PDUs. For the fireside, we're looking at, of course, these are going to be some drive-through bays, so there will be some driving, some parking for the on-duty staff that's not out in the public. Still giving public planer in the park. But we'll have a training area set out there for future that we can possibly get some grants to go ahead and build a new training facility. In fact, we were out training this last weekend to do some firefighter certifications and proctoring and mentioned, hey, this facility's getting in, starting to get into life. We know, but it still has a little bit of life left in it. So we're gonna have to keep working forward with that. Kevin's side?
We don't have too many training things set in the in the back. A lot of the open ready bay is going to be used for that, and it's not indoor parking to put up virtual simulators for firearms. We can get plans of different buildings that are currently in the community. We can go through and we can simulate doing trainings at high school and middle school without having to actually be in the facility. So most of our training area is going to be integrated with that. However, the second addition, the extra space behind that with the training area for the fire department, is going to be integration for the animal care facility, be a separate project. But we're hoping to get that implemented and to have both facilities on site. You know, that's been redesigned to comply with what's called PACT standards two moving forward for twenty or thirty years and be able to provide a much better service, a much cleaner service, as well as integrated with the building that's already there. So it's all one site. Everything is there. Everything's practical. Everything's been been built in and allowing other land that the city has earmarked for other uses to move forward and progress.
So just to make sure I understand, and for those that are listening, the front of it is going to pretty much stay the same, other than some windows will be taken out for security purposes and some redesign in the front.
Correct.
Area. But for the most part, it's going to stay the same.
Same building layout, you know, as far as the outside is concerned, we're not gaining or not adding any additional square footage place whatsoever. But yeah, as far as the front saw is concerned, a lot of it's going to stay the same except for a lot of the windows.
Okay.
The one item that will be changing is the roof structure. Right now, there's a big trench that runs between the two buildings that were built. They'll be adding a peak coming back off to Mary up to the peak that's on the the west side there, or the east side there, I'm sorry, to eliminate that trench where it's already leaking right now. So there will be a little bit of structure just going back a little bit. That's gonna be about the only exterior changes that we'll be seeing as far as roofs are concerned.
And as you mentioned, reduction to some of the windows, only for security and safety purposes, but also for heating and cooling and things of that nature. It's not practical on a public safety facility. We don't think they have all those windows. Advantages for removing that to bring the front of the facade to play.
Okay. Council, do you have any questions for the chiefs?
There's a lot of information. It's kind of fast, but if you leave these up here and have a forum, we'd be happy to entertain any questions at a later time against meeting once a week. So if we don't know, we can figure it out. Yes, sir.
So what kind of lobby or entryway is is the facility going to have? Is it going to have a sizable lobby the public to go into?
Yeah, there'll be a shared area. Mr. Burkhart, that's kind of his area where he has some special apparatuses to display. There'll be a shared central area that's contained.
Because that was gonna, I'll let you tell, that was gonna lead on to the next.
And we'll have a reception area. And then depending upon who's there to see whom, they'll direct either to the fireside, or the police decide that that would be an open area where there would be plenty of seating. If he has a nice fire apparatus, it's gonna put up in the front, a reception area.
Right, so you're here in that reception area, that lobby area.
Great.
And it'll be about roughly one-third of what you're seeing now from there right now. So yes, that empty apparatus will be placed there on display for me to see it and enjoy their apparatus.
That's exactly what I was going to ask. Because, you know, me and history, that was one thing I was gonna ask and see. Because I think, because not only did I think is it something that we as Lamar should be proud of having the first motorized fire truck west of the Mississippi. Denver didn't get it, Los Angeles didn't get it, Lamar, Colorado got that.
Right.
And right now, it's in a safe spot, but having something like that at the firehouse, I think, would bring people to Lamar, especially those who are traveling through, especially retired firefighters or history buffs. We'll see that that's there, and we'll make that a destination to actually see that fire truck. So you read my mind. Thank you. Perfect. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for the chiefs?
Thanks for all your hard work, guys.
Oh, it's a pleasure.
It's nice to see the vision coming coming together, so.
And again, when we have time to actually look at the layouts and see if they have any questions, we'd be happy to entertain that. And we meet once a week, so if we don't know it, we can get the answer pretty.
Okay. Great. Now, do they have a digital copy of these as well that we could?
We do. Yes, I can get you that over to, I'll get to Mary.
Have her send it out to the council, so that way, if we can't get to it tonight to look through the pages, we can look at it on our computers.
I think this set was nineteen or twenty, actually twenty or more pages. I omitted some note pages.
Yeah, there's everything on HVAC, it's a data source, electrical sources, every single layer. Most of it is, you remain understanding how it functions. I want to get into the facts of it. It's all there.
Good one. Okay.
And just a quick note, I'd like to pay Chief Burkhart, he's got a lot more knowledge in this area, building codes, stuff like that. He's done a really good job of answering all these questions, which probably saves us a lot of time beyond my knowledge and expertise. So just want to put that out. He's done a fantastic job.
Thank you. Thank you both. Anthony, do you want to add anything?
Just in my experience, it's very easy when you're doing a public safety building to look at what police and fire want and go, oh, my gosh, they're building the Taj Mahal. That's not what we're doing. We're doing a very practical building, a lot of very thoughtful, conservative, fiscally conservative, yet useful and long term. So I will tell you, in the buildings I've seen and the stuff I've been involved in, this is one of the most fiscally responsible, yet long-term projects that I've seen. And I'm just excited that I got to jump on board and we'll see it when it's in use.
So that was really the goal was to, you know, it's been a long time since we've had a major capital project for the city that was going to be transformative for the community. And I think having the public safety building, opening up additional space inside our municipal building for staff to grow and expand as we as we move forward, and then also offer, you know, opening the opportunities for our public safety department to be able to do that as well, was pretty vital. One of the things that I really noticed during COVID especially was having the police, the fire, the city staff, the library, everybody all in one municipal building. It kept it very difficult for us to to have that compartmentalization of, you know, even though we're locked down in the middle of a crisis, we still had to have access to the police, to the fire, to the staff. And, you know, this would give a good separation of the facilities as well as of still being available. So I think it's a move in the right direction for our community, and it's something we've needed to do for quite some time. So thank you both. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Next item on the agenda is we have an appointment to the Lamar Housing Authority Board. The city council does not oversee the board, but we do appoint the members to the Lamar Housing Authority Board. And they do have one vacancy due to Shannon Venturi resigning from the board. The council policy and procedure manual requires that all vacancies on city boards and commissions be advertised in local media. This was published by the city of Lamar, the Prowers Journal, the Kiowa County Press. One application was received, and that is with you there. So the Lamar Housing Authority Board did review that application and is recommending the appointment of Debbie Widener to fill the unexpired five-year term that'll expire on June first, 2027. So they do, they did submit a letter with that as well, as the recommendation of Lamar Housing Authority Board to appoint her, Debbie Widener. So do we have any questions on this, council?
I don't have any questions. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Debbie Widener to the board, the more housing authority board.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to appoint Debbie Widener to the Lamar Housing Authority Board. Any final discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay. Moving along, we also have an appointment to the airport advisory board as well. Burton Heckman's term expired on February first of 2025. The council also and the city had published it in the Prowers Journal, the Kiowa County Press. There were two applications that were received for the board, and the board had made their recommendation. You can see the application and the recommendation for Matthew Lee Carrigan. The airport advisory board is recommending that he fills the unexpired five-year term that'll expire on February first, 2030. Boy, that's hard to see, 2030. That's coming up quick. So do we have a motion to accept Matthew Carrigan's?
Second, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any final questions? Seeing none. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Next item is request for extraterritorial water and sewer services at 3101 Memorial Drive. This was initiated by Pat as well. So Pat, would you like to speak on this?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So recently, we had a request from Jake Specht, who runs the copper project of LCC Building Trades. So one of their houses, they most recently have been working on out there is just, it's a long memorial drive, 3101 Memorial Drive. It's actually outside the city limits, so they're requesting extraterritorial water and sewer service. So staff took a look at it, and we would, we would recommend council approve it.
Now, the house next door that they just completed, is that annexed or no? Okay, so if the buyer decides that they would rather annex rather than paying the extraterritorial fees, they could go through the process once it's purchased. Is that right? Okay. Because there would be extraterritorial fees, right?
Right, it'd be double rate for water and sewer.
Okay. Any other questions from the council?
Don't have any.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the extraterritorial water services?
Yeah, I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the request for extraterritorial water service for 3101 Memorial Drive. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pat.
Next item on the agenda is approve dock access streamline agreement. This was initiated by Emery Crampton, who's gonna let Emery speak on this.
Thank you, council. I think some of you are new enough. You probably don't know what we're talking about. But all government agencies are are now mandated to work towards a hundred percent ADA compliance on their websites and all digital outlets, including social media. Colorado kind of led the curve on that, and everything was set to, were required to hit that mark in July of 2025. Courtney Riccio has done amazing, an amazing job of of moving us towards that point. First, we adopted a website that gave us, our website was was compliant, and then much of the content that was on it kind of rolled into that compliance. As you can see, our our numbers, she went from a couple hundred documents that were noncompliant when we, when she first came on, and now down to forty-eight. That streamline or that dock dock access brought it down to eight documents that are noncompliant. So it really does its job. It's it's worth the money because there's, there's some documents that we're just never going to make compliant. A lot of our Excel forms we've got on the website, our comprehensive plan, some of our other major documents that are very complicated documents are just, they're too difficult to to make compliant. So with this, if we go with a three-year agreement with Dock Access, which is now owned by Streamline, we get that discount. So I'm asking council to approve a a three-year discount or a three-year.
We can't do that as a city. We can't prepay for three years because we have to budget it for each year, and we have to pay it, and it has to be expensed in the year that that cost incurred. So it's along with that Tabor restriction, how we have to have that where we can opt out each year, so we can't prepay for three years.
Great.
Lance, have you reviewed the contract?
I have, and there's an addendum attached with the Tabor language included.
Everything else looks good?
Yeah, I mean, generally, it's not a lot of terms involved in this. It's a cost for service.
So under those circumstances, I'll ask them if they'd be willing to allow us to pay every year.
At that rate?
Yes.
We can do the three-year agreement with the Tabor restriction.
Can we commit to three years and get the discount, or would it just be prepaid?
I think that's what you're saying.
I will, I will, I I have a feeling they'll be okay with if we say yes to a three-year plan, and they just wait for their money for every year, then I think they'll be fine. That's what we do with the website.
Okay. Okay. All right, council, what is your pleasure?
Make a motion to approve the dock access streamline agreement and allow the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Next item on the agenda is a cooperative service agreement between the city of Lamar and the USDA. This is brought back after having some clarification to the contract. Is that right, Anthony?
Yes, that is. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is bringing it back after we had negotiated a different date. So we're looking at an annual date from December first, 2025, to December first of 2026. And I believe Lance has had an opportunity to look over the changes.
Lance?
Yeah, I've reviewed it. We had, went back and forth a little bit with them on some language stuff. And ultimately, council can terminate this upon sixty days' notice. It has language in there regarding the term being December thirty-first, 2026, not to exceed five years. My understanding is as well, and talking with Anthony, that essentially it's going to be, we're paying, it has an amount in there, but we're paying for any services that they're going to provide.
Correct. It is not a prepay. And so how we came to this contract negotiation conversation was, we recently had the archery range. We had to handle the prairie dogs. And then prior to that, we've had to handle the beaver issues. We've got some more beaver issues on the far side of Willow Creek. We've also got beaver issues on the Greenbelt. And just to allude to what you were saying, councilmen, is with the skunks, that is something that is in the provision. Anything wildlife, we will have the ability to access their services to help us out.
And that would be for trapping, relocating, or whatever they would need to do to mitigate that threat to, or mitigate those issues. Is that correct?
All of the above. So if it's a beaver issue, they normally just trans home to somewhere on the west. All of the above, so if it's a beaver issue, they normally just trans home them to somewhere on the western slope and I'm sure they do that to just about anything else that they would catch.
Okay.
That would be, that would be our first, our first recommendation.
Okay. And will they do that inside the city limits?
Correct, it's all inside city limits.
And this one is for the year twenty twenty-six, right?
So it's December first of this year until December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six?
Correct.
That's what is stated in the contract.
And we will only be billed for the services that we, we render.
Okay. And that's the USDA comes in to deal with the wildlife issues, it's not the city animal control or code enforcement that they come in to do it, how does that work?
So if it's something that our code enforcement can handle, we definitely call them first. But when we have some of the issues we've had where we don't have a scope of work for that, then we contact them to come in and, and they take care of the problem.
The specialists, yeah.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Lance gave me the look that he's reviewed this.
Yeah.
And so I'd like to make a motion to sign the agreement.
Okay, we have a motion to sign it, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We do have a second. Any final questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.
unanimous in favor of?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is authorize staff to accept and sign the John Henry Eldred Jr. Grant Agreement. This is initiated by Kristen.
Yes, Sue had came before you and asked for permission to apply for this money for sixty-five hundred dollars and it's for their children's resources. And we were awarded the grant, so we are just asking that you accept and approve the grant agreement and allow the mayor to sign.
Okay.
And this, this grant requires no match and there's very, and there's no reporting. So it's probably the easiest thing we've ever done, so sixty-five hundred dollars.
All right, council, shall we accept and sign the John Henry Eldred Grant Agreement?
So moved.
Second.
And allow the mayor to sign?
Yes.
And same second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
unanimous in favor of?
Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approve staff to apply for the Colorado Pet Overpopulation Fund Grant, also initiated by Kristen.
Yeah, so this is an annual grant that we apply for every year and it allows the, the animal shelter to spay and neuter the animals as they come in. So we're applying for eight thousand dollars for that and two thousand for veterinary care and a thousand for microchips. So we had ten, that's eleven thousand dollars that we'll apply for, for this grant if you give us permission. And so we're just asking for permission to apply and for the mayor to sign the grant agreement when it comes in.
And these funds come from the license plate grant, right?
That's true, it's called the Colorado Pet Overpopulation Fund Grant, yes.
Great. Council?
I'll move to apply for the grant and the mayor sign when it comes. Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to allow this, approve the staff to apply for the Pet Overpopulation Fund Grant and allow the mayor to sign. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
unanimous in favor of?
All right, moving right along, permission to apply for the History Colorado Certified Local Government Grant Program. This is initiated by Kristen.
Actually, Anne Marie had came across this opportunity. Her board with Historic Preservation went to a Saving Places Conference last year and they're wanting to do the same. So the CLG, which is Historic Colorado Certified Local Government, offers a grant program for scholarships for them to attend this conference. And the conference is in February eleventh through thirteenth, twenty twenty-six. So we're just asking for permission to apply for the a thousand dollars for them to be able to supplement their trip to the conference.
Okay.
And for the mayor to sign the agreement.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second, yeah.
We have a motion in a second to authorize the staff to apply for the History Colorado Certified Local Government Grant and allow the mayor to sign. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
unanimous in favor of?
All right, so this one I brought in to discuss for our December twenty-second meeting. Of course, this is the week of Christmas. Some families may be traveling, some people may not be able to make it for the meeting, so I wanted to bring it up to the council. December the twenty-second is our next, or is our second meeting in December. Some years we have had the meeting, some years we have bypassed it. I wanted to bring it up for a discussion with the staff and with the council to see if that is something we want to schedule a meeting or if we felt like we could bypass it.
I feel like we go ahead and bypass it, like we have the last couple of years.
So if we do bypass it, we'll need to give authorization for the treasurer to pay bills, right?
That's correct.
Are there any other items that we would need to take care of before the end of the year if we missed that last meeting?
Not that I know of right now, no. We're doing our supplemental budget on the eighth.
On the eighth?
I think. Everything that I.
Okay. And I think we can move a lot of it to the eighth if we need to. And then the following meeting, I was trying to think when that would be.
I think it's like the twelfth?
The thirteenth of January.
Thirteenth of January?
Right.
Okay. So we could probably get by without the second meeting in December.
Twelve.
The twelve? Okay. So we would have the meeting in December the eighth and then a meeting on the January the twelfth and skip the twenty-second, is that correct?
Yes.
And you're all are comfortable with that?
Make a motion.
I don't mind.
Make a motion to cancel the meeting on December twenty-second and give permission to the city treasurer to pay bills.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any concerns or questions on it?
No, I think we had enough meetings in November to make up for the one December.
Yeah, we had quite a few, one every week in November.
And I'll attach anything that we paid in between meetings on that meeting on the twelfth. You'll see everything that was paid.
So we'll just retroactively review?
Yes. They'll see all the detail.
All right, well, we have a motion in a second to cancel the meeting, the second meeting of December for December twenty-second. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
unanimous in favor of?
Okay. Next item on the agenda is one that I brought up as well. Every year, we go through and do a discussion of the liaison appointments. As I mentioned earlier, we, the new council members, Councilmember Johnson and Councilmember, I just drew a blank. I don't know why I drew a blank, but nonetheless, they don't have any positions yet. What I would really like to ask the council to do is really look at what is interesting to you and what's not. We have a lot of the members that are in these positions that have been there for a long time. And the whole idea of us being a liaison to these boards is so that way we get familiar with all the different areas of the city. So if there's a board that you have not been on, we will bring this back on the eighth to schedule that. And if you can talk amongst ourselves as far as doing any trading of positions or is that something that you would be willing to give up if, if I was interested in it? Have those kind of conversations, I would truly appreciate it because there are some people that have never been on the airport board, that have never been on the tree board, never, don't know anything about water and I think that it's important for each council member to have a good understanding of all the different various departments within the city and their boards. And the best way to do that is to be involved in these boards. So if you wouldn't mind, over the next few weeks, taking a look at this list, seeing what board member or what boards you have, pick the ones that you're interested in joining on to and go from there. The CML Policy Committee Meeting, I know that's online, is how you would attend that, but it is a very important board because it's the Colorado Municipal League. The Main Street Board, we had Councilmember Ramada on there and they do a lot for the community. We always have a Chamber of Commerce member that attends, but I don't think we've had anybody from the staff attending the Chamber of Commerce meetings lately. They kind of dropped off when Martha had left. So either we need to put a staff member in there or get a liaison from a council member. But I would really like for us to think about this and see if we can shuffle a lot of the board members around if we can.
I'd really like to take a crack at the CML Policy Committee. I was really intrigued by it at the CML Conference this year and getting more involved with CMO, especially after some conversations with Mayor Gruet out of Rocky Ford. So I definitely am interested in that one, I just wanted to put that out there first, almost as a tip, if you will.
Okay.
I'm really curious on the inner workings on how, on, on CML and how that, how their support helps us.
Okay, that sounds good. So that was my ask, I just wanted to have a discussion about that. I think it's just important. I had been the representative liaison for SECED and CCOG over the last year because I was also acting as the interim city administrator and have time to attend all of those meetings and they can be a little lengthy. But if we can get a council member on there, I would prefer to do that, just to keep the involvement with the council on CCOG and Southeast Colorado Council of Governments and Economic Development or Enterprise Development. So just a couple of ideas on that.
When do they meet?
The last Wednesday of each month. Okay.
Would that be something Mary maybe gets out to all the boards when they meet?
Yeah, we could do that, ask her if she can send out a list with the different boards and when they meet because that may help to determine what people can and can't do.
That'd be great, yeah, we could do that.
So we'll get an updated list to everybody about that.
Sounds great.
This week.
And the SECED, CCOG is not, it's just a liaison, it's just sitting in on the meetings, correct?
Actually, no, the SECED, CCOG, you are a voting member.
Okay. I was gonna say, I have to sit on them anyways, but never mind, that'd be a conflict of interest.
That would be a conflict. Yeah, the CCOG is the Southeast Colorado Council of Governments, we would have to assign you as the voting representative for the city on that as well. So it's a little bit more in-depth than a regular advisory board. Okay. Any questions on it or any other discussion?
I think definitely, like was mentioned, getting the, the meeting times out for everyone to take a look at and look at our schedules and see what'll work.
Yeah, that'll help a lot.
We'll get those out tomorrow.
Okay. All right, so there wasn't really any action on that, it was just more of a discussion. The next item on the agenda will go on to the EV charging stations. The EV charging stations at the Chamber of Commerce Building, the Welcome Center, the depot for the city. There are two sets of charging stations, one is the Tesla charging and one is the Hyon or the, the, they're the different type of fast charger, the CCS chargers. And what this is, is the company named Hyon is turning this over to a new company called Goodfinch. And what they wanted to do is assign the lease agreement over to the new company. There's not going to be any changes to our agreement other than just the reassignment to the new company who will be managing it. They will be assuming all obligations of managing them and taking care of them. No change for the city, it's just a change of assignment of who is managing and operating those EV charging stations. So that's what this request is. We did get it to the attorney to have them review, have him review it. Did you have anything you wanted to add, Lance?
No, I mean, I looked at the original MOU that was done in, it was twenty twenty-one. I, I don't see any issues with it, essentially it's just assigning the rights to this other company for them to be responsible for all terms and conditions of the original contract.
And there was no change to the original contract, right?
Yeah, fifteen years of a side agreement under a license, so it's not really a lease agreement, it's just a licensing agreement.
Okay. Okay, any other questions for, on this topic?
Make a motion to approve ownership change and continue license agreement with the new owner and allow the mayor to sign the consent to assignment. A lot of assigns.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any final questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
unanimous in favor of?
Okay. Next item is the twenty twenty-five, actually it should be the twenty twenty-six, strategic planning and facilitation. Mitch and I had a discussion when he started up and one of the things we had talked about was my desire to update our strategic plan. We had a, a weekend or a Friday and Saturday strategic planning session back in two thousand nineteen. And with that, we brought in a facilitator that came in, she was a professional that led the staff on a Friday and then the council came in on Saturday and we spent half a day with the council and the facilitator and we developed a plan for the next, it was supposed to be a five-year plan, we did that. We have had an update done in two thousand twenty-one of that strategic plan, but the last one we did, we just had the president of LCC go through and, and review everything with us to do an update. It's been, it's been quite some time now, six years. I think it's time for us to sit down and do another five-year strategic plan and make determinations. We now have our comprehensive plan, which is a ten-year plan. We have our master plans that are, our various master plans that are working in the city. We have a lot of things that we're trying to accomplish and getting some direction. This would just give the council and the staff an opportunity to work together and put all of our efforts into a document that we can follow and say, more of a checklist of what we want to accomplish over the next five years. And now that we have a new council, I think it's more critical than ever that we all sit down and see where we're going with the city, what we want to accomplish, what we want to do, where we want to put our funding at and where we want to grow or not grow or whatever it may be. I think it's an important piece of the puzzle. I did have a conversation with the individual who did it previously in two thousand nineteen, she'd given me a price quote. However, Mitch also had an individual who does this type of work as far as facilitating a strategic plan workshop. And the price that Mitch had found it for was significantly lower. So this is a four thousand dollar investment for the city to have this facilitator come in and help us make this plan. Is there anything you want to add, Mitch?
So I, I have, the facilitator's name is Dot Miller, she's a former council member from Arvada and for twenty-five years, she's been involved in businesses and different things like that. She was in, she owned an association management company. When I was on the board of the American Association of Code Enforcement, she was our executive director and she led us through several strategic plans, a couple of yearly ones and then some, some longer ones. And she doesn't just lead great conversation and then you walk away saying, well, that's great, what do we do with it? She really guides us through the plan, the comprehensive plan we have and other stuff. And then she'll, she meets with the team, then she meets with the council and then she comes back with recommendations, you know, a week or two later after she had a chance to do it and come back and say, here's, here's the most efficient and logical steps for you based on the city team's feedback and, and impression as well as the council's direction. And so it makes it really efficient and effective for us to know what are we working on and when and how do we know when we've found success and then how, when to move to the next, the next project. And she, she's just fantastic. She will, you will walk out of there with, you know, sweat running down your, your forehead because she's just full of fire and, and passion for everything. And so I'm, you know, there's a lot of people that do this, but having personal experience and being very impressed. And for the record, I have no financial interest in this, I have, we are colleagues. You know, we don't spend weekends at each other's houses or anything like that. It's just a purely professional relationship that, that just, she's one of the people that I've just been, always been impressed with. Just because of the process as well as the, the outcome, the product that we get at the end.
Been looking at our recommendations and the information. Been looking at her recommendations and the information that she had provided, which is included in your packet. She looked very skilled and accomplished, and I think she would be a, a good asset for us moving forward with this strategic plan. So that's why we wanted to bring it to the council, make you aware of what the idea was. This is something that would be, that I would prefer to have the council approve and be in agreement with if we were to do a strategic plan. So that's why I wanted to bring it to you.
Or are we budgeted for it?
Well, there is, I do set aside some consulting funds each year for stuff like this that comes up. I believe there's $10,000 in there. So this would fall under that category in the 26 budget.
And what I asked Mitch to do is if we decide to do this, we would do it off-site out of the city. Maybe rent the Colorado room at the tavern or something that's off-site, get people out of the mindset of being at work so that they can think freely and think about what we're doing and how we're moving forward. We keep it very inexpensive, just find an outside room that we can get outside of the city and look at trying to determine where do we want to move forward in the future.
Do we need Lance to review a contract?
I'm sure there's going to be a scope of work. We haven't gotten to that point with her yet.
So you're just looking for approval to move forward?
Right, right, just direction, knowing that this is the, the cost. And then we can certainly have Lance review the scope of work and, and that stuff. Part of the reason we're getting such a great deal is she's going to be here in Colorado. She lives in Guam. She's going to be here in January, so we want to move this forward so that we can get that in process and get the scheduling done. And then figure out a time for her during that week to meet with the team and then also with the council.
How cold is it in Guam in January?
Not very cold.
Does she have an extra large suitcase?
She, she also has a cabin in, in the mountains here in Colorado. So she's, she'll be expecting, she won't be surprised by our, our weather here.
So we don't need a motion then, we can just give direction?
I would, you know, if you want to do, if the council is good with moving forward with a strategic plan in 2026, I would like to do a motion to move forward with a strategic plan in 2026.
I make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion in a second to move forward with a strategic plan meeting in 2026. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
I do think it'll be important, and I just wanted to make sure we had it on the records for the public to know that we are working on a strategic plan for us.
Yeah.
All right, next item on the agenda is miscellaneous items. Do we have any miscellaneous items? Nothing for the rest? There is one item that I would like to mention for myself, and I, I admit to bring it up at the beginning of the opening of the session. It is my understanding that Galen Burnett is not feeling very well and doing, and is going through a difficult time. I wanted to mention that he is in our thoughts and prayers and hopefully the council feels the same. He's been a fixture of our city council meetings for the last 10 years that I know of, if not longer. So he was missed tonight and at our last meeting, of course, he's usually here at every single meeting. But we did find out that he is having some health issues right now and we just wanted to, I wanted to put out our thoughts and prayers to him and his family as they're going through this time and wish him the best. All right, anybody want to add anything or any miscellaneous items?
We're thinking about him the last two liquor licenses.
Yeah. He's always been pretty passionate about the liquor licenses and, and wanting to at least, even if he, given if we didn't vote against it, he at least wanted to get the information out to us. And that's been appreciated that he at least cares enough to try there.
Yep. As a recovering alcoholic, I appreciate a lot of the things he says because I think they're important for people to know about alcohol. While at the same time, we have to remain pretty to the point with making sure boxes are checked before we approve licenses. So a lot of the information he does get up here and speak on is very true in regard to alcohol.
Agreed. Okay, next item on the agenda is our executive session for the discussion of a personnel matter not involving any specific. Oh, parade of lights? Now you mention it. So she did have a miscellaneous item for the parade of lights. Do we have a number for who's going to be involved in the parade of lights?
I told Mary I'd be there.
Brad?
Yeah, I'll be there.
Dave?
We're having a vehicle to end the parade lights.
And I worked that evening.
I told Mary I would be there.
Okay, and Jerry?
Yeah.
And I'm driving all the way back from the cabin, so yes, I will be there too. Be here just for that.
I'm gonna get into town at like 5:30.
Me too. So we'll be rushing in there, but we'll get there, we'll be there for it.
Yes.
All right, so the next item then is our executive session for discussion of personnel matters not involving any specific employees who have requested any discussion in any matter in open session. Any member of the city council that was elected or an appointment of any person who filled this body. This is to do a 30-day check-in with the city administrator. This is under Colorado revised statutes 246402 subsection four, subsection F. So this is just a 30-day update with the city administrator. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
So we have a motion in a second to enter into the executive session. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
So there will be no decisions coming out of this executive session. Shortly after the executive session, we will adjourn. Our next meeting is on Monday, December the 8th at 2025 at 7:00 PM, and we hope to see you then.